She's been working in the industry for 20 years.
Are you all ready?
Rami, ready?
At this time, I'll call the Tuesday, April the 13th, 2021, meeting of the Alexander County Board of Education to order, and if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And if I'd like to recognize Mr. Rami Robinson for our pledge of allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, you've had the opportunity to review the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And if you would, please state your name.
Marty Lautermil.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Scott Bowman.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. At this time, we'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for our honors and recognitions.
Thank you Chairman Schrum and members of the board. This is always a highlight, and we haven't had many honors and recognitions because of the COVID restrictions, but as those have been lightened some, we're kind of back on a normal routine, and for me, that's a happy day. I mentioned to the Wills family as we walked in tonight that it's wonderful to be able to gather and be somewhat normal again. And tonight, we will be recognizing some Beta Club winners. I would ask that Board Member Ryan and Board Member Lautermil to please come up and assist me with these recognitions. And students, what I'm going to ask you to do, those who are in attendance tonight, after we recognize you, if you'll stay in the front, and then when we're finished with all of the recognitions, if you'll go to the lobby area for a picture. The reason that I'm asking that, we have a couple of students who will be recognized several times, and that will keep you from having to go get a picture in back so many times. Renee Mead's in the back, and she'll take the pictures for us. So let's get started. The Beta Club State Convention was held virtually for all students this year. Over 50 high schools and over 1,500 students across North Carolina competed in 57 competitions, varying in categories from academics to art to talent. ACHS had 30 students compete in 38 different competitions. We were fortunate to have 13 students place in the top five in 16 categories. Ms. Myla Ratchford also ran for state president, so let's give her a round of applause. That takes a great deal of courage. These students earned the chance to compete at the National Beta Club Convention that will be held in Orlando, Florida in June. This convention will be a hybrid-type convention with students competing on-site and virtually. Every student that qualified for our county that we'll recognize tonight will be involved in these competitions. Parents will be accompanying their students to provide support throughout the event. We are so proud of all of the students who competed, and in the 50-year history of the ACHS Beta Club chapter, this is the highest number of students who have qualified to compete at the national convention, and that deserves a round of applause also. We're going to get started with the winners from Alexander Central High School. If you will come forward, let's first recognize Benny Heath, Agro Science, 9th grade, 4th place. Next, we have Nolan Heath, Agro Science, 11th grade, 4th place. Please come forward Logan Shoemaker, Math, 9th grade, 4th place. Bodie King, please come forward, Math, 11th grade, 5th place. He's not here. Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed. All right, we will recognize Amarena Chapman, On-Site Painting, Division 1, 2nd place. And the next students actually competed as a team for the Quiz Bowl. Please come forward Faith Kerrigan, Sarah Beth Enman, Bodie King, and Jackson Reed. Quiz Bowl, 2nd place. And I'm not sure if this is nice, but I'm going to put this little caveat in. We are so proud to note that our Quiz Bowl team placed 2nd in the state, and we were ahead of the North Carolina School of Science and Math. Next, we will recognize Macy Johnson, Science, 10th grade, 3rd place. Please come forward Nate Dollstrun, Social Studies, 9th grade, 1st place. Jackson Reed, please come up again, Social Studies, 11th grade, 4th place. Caroline Wills, please come forward, Social Studies, 12th grade, 2nd place. Please come forward Sonia Santa Maria, Spanish, 9th grade, 5th place. The next student, I want you to stay up for two awards. It's Amarena Chapman, Two-Dimensional Design, 2nd place, and Drawing, Division 1, 3rd place. Next, we have Lily Haney, Jewelry, Division 1, 2nd place. And then back up again, we have Amarena Chapman, Painting, Division 1, 2nd place. And the last recognition goes to Benny Heath, Woodworking, Division 1, 1st place. All these students are now eligible to compete at the national convention in June. As I said before, we want to wish all of you the best of luck, and we are certainly rooting for you from Alexander County. Now, before you go out for a picture, if Donna Reed and Carrie Wimberly are here, please come forward. I know Mrs. Reed's here. I see her in the audience. Is Ms. Wimberly here? They are the sponsors for the Alexander County, Alexander Central, excuse me, Beta Club, and they do a lot with this group. They go above and beyond, and you can very much tell that their support and leadership, it's evident, but not only that, it's greatly appreciated. Please give Mrs. Reed a round of applause. Okay, Mrs. Mead, I'm going to let you be in charge, students. If you'll go back to the lobby, we'll take care of some pictures. Again, congratulations.
Have we had anyone sign up for public comment?
No one.
Okay. Okay, board members, you've had the opportunity to review the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Rami Robinson makes a motion to accept consent agenda.
Bridgette Ryan, 2nd.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. All right, now we will recognize Mr. Andy Palmer, Principal of Stony Point Elementary School, for an update.
Good evening, guys. Can everybody hear me all right? Good, there's not too many people. Chairman Schrum, Dr. Hefner, board members, it is certainly a privilege to be here tonight to speak about Stony Point and some of the highlights that we have at the school. Certainly, I consider it a privilege still to be the principal over at Stony Point. It is an amazing school with a wonderful community and certainly a very, very hard-working staff that I can't even begin to brag enough about. Does somebody have the clue? Thank you. Perfect. I have about five slides, maybe seven minutes, I think that's what we're looking at, and I'm lucky enough that Mr. Cash is going behind me, so I don't have to follow him, but I'm going to hit some of the highlights, and one is where we spent our Title I money. One thing that we're very proud of, we have quite a few EC students, and that's like every school, it's just a little bit overwhelming for the one teacher that we have. So we were able to hire Ms. Owens to go in there and actually be a TA in the EC classroom with Ms. Atwood, and it's made a huge difference as far as being able to serve those students. And the reason, one of the other reasons was that we were a targeted school because of our EC students, so we were able to get her in there to help. We also had a digital dive for our teachers, so this, we actually got them a sub for the day, and they got into some of the platforms that they're using to teach remotely, and were able to do some extra research on their own as well. We had every teacher in the building run through that, and probably the highlight for them, of course, was that they earned some digital credit towards their renewal. Then we, this year, we only did $10 per child for the media center. Normally, we can get a little bit more than that, but we, we were hiring Ms. Owens, and we had to spend it some other places, but we did manage to get them 10 bucks, and that's per child, so that was roughly a couple thousand dollars for our media center. And then our Title I night, which usually we could bring parents in, we had to have a drive-through for our Title I night, but I thought we got pretty creative. We, we actually did videos, and we handed out the material through not only our car line, but at a certain time where they could come, and we had more than 75% of our families show up and pick up the material, and then watching the videos and learning how to use that material at home as supplement for them. The one there, Ms. Martin, I only put her in there, she wasn't our Title I money, but we were able to pick her up, and I just wanted to say a thank you to the board members and the central office staff. That was the TA that we were able to hire, and I am telling you, she has made a huge difference at our school. The interventions that she's able to do and complete, and she's just really honestly, Ms. Martin's a go-getter, and she, she's going to be driving a bus for us pretty soon. She does the car duty, the bus duty, anything we ask her to do, she's done an amazing job. But where she's a real highlight is working with our students, which has made a big difference for us. We do have some teachers retiring, and they are what I would call legends at Stony Point. Chris Hefner and Tracy Van Story, they were there long, long, long before me, and they are going to be missed. I just wanted to highlight them. They, now Ms. Van Story, she, she has gone out already, but now Mr. Hefner, he still is there till 5:00 or 5:30 every night working. He, he is just an amazing man, and he will certainly be missed, and when Ms. Van Story was still there, she was also there till 5:00 or 5:30. So it was something to have some of the oldest teachers in the building actually still putting in that kind of time, and that experience that they bring to the table, that is certainly going to be, be missed, and, and just to, just to say thank you to Mr. Hefner and Ms. Van Story publicly is why I wanted to highlight them today. Now, with them leaving, it didn't necessarily mean that we were bringing in these teachers, but we do have three new teachers. You can see Ms. Ryan, Ms. Cornell, and Ms. Barnes. Ms. Cornell and Ms. Barnes, we picked up at the beginning of the year, and Ms. Ryan, we just picked up within the last month and a half or so, and they are doing just a fantastic job for us. They are all willing to accept any kind of critique, hey, I need you to do this, work on this, and they, they get right to it, and they do just a fantastic job. And the reason I kind of put these two slides together, because if we can keep these three teachers like you, like you want to in your building over the course of the next several years, they're going to make a big difference at Stony Point. So we kind of have some that are leaving, and then we have these wonderful three new teachers that'll be filling in for them. So just highlight them. Thank you. Oh, you want to talk about a hard job this year. Ms. Bowman, our school nurse, oof, and she has done an amazing job. She, for everything that she has to deal with, and all the phone calls that she has to make, and all the poor parents that she has to say, your, your poor student is now quarantined for 10 days, or 14 days, or 24 days, or whatever it turns out to be, she's handled it all with a, with a smile. And I don't know where I would be at my school without a nurse that I could say, literally, hold on here, let me, let me get the nurse, and let me see, let me make sure I know that I'm telling you the right thing. And even if she's at the other school, I can give her a call, and she has no problem, oh, this is what it is, let me call the parents, and she has just been absolutely wonderful for us. And then our Officer Knox, Ms. Knox, is our SRO. She, the, the nice thing about her is she is making these connections with our students, especially our little ones, our Head Start students. I see her in the Head Start classrooms all the time, and it's really important at any school for, for students in this county, but especially at Stony Point, to see a positive interaction with a police officer. And she really makes it a point to get in there and get to, to know the kids, especially those little ones, the three and four-year-olds, and I, I feel like that along with the way she does her rounds in the building. Sometimes I'm outside, and I'm passing her, and she's just making sure everything's clear outside and in, in the building. Then she does the car duty in the afternoon, she does the car duty in the morning, and that's huge for parents to see an officer, a resource officer, out there, just for safety issues. To, to have her out there is just a, a real highlight for me, and she is doing an outstanding job, and I, and I just want to also say thank you to the Sheriff's Department for providing such a wonderful officer for us. Oh, now, this is the good stuff here. This is, so this is what we do everything for right here, and I will be the first one to tell you, and certainly you guys know, because I, I know that all of us had, it's just been very, just a very different year, and there's probably no other way to say that, but this is why we're here. This is, these are the students, and I have some highlights of some things that we've still been able to do that I will say is normal, because so much has been taken away from our students, but right there, you can see Jordy, he's holding up the picture, and he won our Little Reed contest at the school, and I know that doesn't seem like a, a huge deal, but his artwork is going to be displayed over at LR, and he was in the newsletter that went home last month to the parents. So for Jordy, it was, it was a huge deal, and it was just a moment of regular for us at the school. Then you can see our Battle of the Books, and they did just an amazing job, and I say that because normally, we start practicing Battle of the Books in the fall, and we didn't know if we would have a Battle of the Books, it was kind of a toss-up, and we ended up getting Battle of the Books set and on the schedule, and they really didn't start practice until January, February, somewhere in that area, and I sat in, and of course, it was virtual, and I sat in on a handful of the other schools that they were competing against, and they did such a great job. They had read the books, the teachers had put the time in with them, mostly during their planning, Ms. Harrington, Jordan Hefner, Chris Hefner, and Ms. Barnes, they did it during their planning time, took, taking their own time to make sure these guys were ready for the Battle of the Books. Now, of course, we don't know where they finished, but I do want to highlight that they beat Hit Night, which was the team that won, so I don't know if that counts for anything. Count it for us, I guess. Then we were able to do the Running Club, and, and this was, this is a club that meets after school on Mondays, and they literally, I mean, it's as simple as what it sounds like, but for that bit of normal, it, it was a huge deal. I remember sending Dr. Hilton something, and it was an email that just said, hey, are we allowed to do this? And when she sent back, yeah, that sounds good, I thought, yes, you know, something normal for these kids. So we've been doing this for the last probably six weeks, eight weeks. Every Monday, they stay for about 45 minutes, and they just try to improve each Monday on their lap time, and then we do a little 5K on Barnes Street at the, towards the end of the year, and they get T-shirts, and we make a big fuss about it, and it's a really, it's a really nice thing. Oh, Mr. Cash, I did highlight Jamie in here a little bit. Ms. Johnson is our music teacher, and she's actually the music teacher for Ms. Cash, uh, Mr. Cash, excuse me, and myself, and you can see there, that's a picture of her classroom on the left. I mean, what do you do if you're a music teacher and you can't sing with your students? She has adapted in her classroom, it has been amazing to see what she can do. She got those buckets, the five-gallon buckets donated from Lowe's, and the kids are playing the, the drums and playing, and learning notes and playing the drums with the notes, and she just never missed a beat, she never complained, and as you can see, the, the kids are just having a, a great time in her music class. The last highlight there, we had our spelling bee winners, David and Cash, and they did a, a great job representing us at the county level. The last little bit there that I want to highlight, this was our of-the-year staff, and you can see that I have Kayla Barr there, Shannon Cornell, Lauren Deal was our actual, she was our Teacher of the Year, and then Ms. Tina Barr was our Classified Staff Member. Kayla Barr was our Certified, and of course, Shannon Cornell would have been what I'd say was our rookie, our first-year teacher at our school. They're, they're amazing. I, there's nothing else I can say. They do a fantastic job at our school, and I just wanted to highlight them and make sure everybody else saw that as well. I would invite you guys over to the school, but I don't think, I don't think we're doing visits, are we, guys? I don't think you're going to be able to come, so that's unfortunate. I love when you guys come, I love when you get to see the school and, and some of the stuff that's going on and some of the highlights, but I want to assure you that we are trying to make it as normal as we can for our students in this very just different time, and, and some of these things that these students are going through, they're, they're going to remember this stuff for the rest of their lives, and certainly, we will as well, but I do thank you for what you do, central office staff as, as well, for what you guys do, and this is just a great place to work, and I feel, I feel very privileged to, to be here. So thank you for your time, certainly if you have any questions.
We appreciate it. Nice job.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Have a good evening, guys.
Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Mr. Kerry Cash, Principal of Sugarloaf Elementary School, for a school update.
Let's take off the masks, that might be, that might work a whole lot better to do it that way. Dr. Hefner, Chairman Schrum, and board members, I thank you for another opportunity to come tell you about the great things that are going on at Sugarloaf School. Mr. Palmer said with, with his school, I want to say the same thing about Sugarloaf. When you have good students, I guess it needs to be, when you have good students and quality staff members and teachers, and then you combine that with parental support and help with the community, good things are going to happen at your school, and that's what happens at, at Sugarloaf. We'll go to the next slide. First thing we want to talk about is a, a new program we're, we're putting in this year, and one thing, in the past few years, we've looked at our reading scores, and they have not been as up as high as we want them, they have not been as high as our, our math scores on assessments, and in previous years, the OGE test, we weren't seeing the growth that we wanted to see in, in reading. So we put this new program into place this year in Language Arts, and I put some things on here that we have seen that have helped out, that we feel like during can do those three things, we're doing a, a good job with that. The next thing is develop a stronger vocabulary. When I was, uh, in the rooms observing teachers and, uh, doing walkthroughs, uh, the teachers are teaching, and they're, these vocabulary words are more advanced. And I'm saying, you know, what grade level are these words? Well, they're more advanced than what we have been used to have. So what we're doing, we're strengthening knowledge for the, the students, and they're learning advanced words. And what we wanna have come out of that, we want to improve reading comprehension. And in the past, we've had some students that are fluent readers, they could read the words on the page, but they, they weren't taking in what they need to understand and know about the, the text. So we hope that will happen for that. Uh, next thing, this is encourage students to investigate, uh, the topics that they're studying. Uh, it has helped teachers incorporate science and social studies. Some of the things that, uh, teachers were, have told me, uh, one lesson I saw was about Jacques Cousteau, and, uh, had a couple of little fellows get interested in Jacques Cousteau. Uh, another thing was astronomy, learn about the solar system, and, uh, then the social studies, being able to connect, uh, where people live in Alexander County, and with other parts of the world. So that has helped, uh, and students have learned more, and they've, they're interested in things more, and they, they start, uh, studying more about these topics. Let's see, next one is about thinking strategies and provide deep understanding of themes. Uh, we're, we're doing a better job of teaching kids how to think, and help them develop thinking skills. With, uh, they, they, what was the reason behind that? Why did they do that in the story? Uh, so they're learning things along those lines. Uh, in the Media Center, uh, the Media Center, the media person has been working with teachers to provide books on topics that they're studying, and she has seen the increase of students on their own going to the Media Center and checking out books related to the topics the teachers are teaching in lessons. And then, I believe the last one I have is about summarizing techniques. During the lesson, uh, students are doing their job of writing notes and, and keeping up with what they've learned during the lesson. Uh, so you see two things there, think, pair, share, and quick write. It has helped students develop their, their writing skills. And also, during think, pair, share, they may be with a partner, and they can talk with their partner and explain to them what they learned in their own words, and that helps them, uh, understand the concept. All right, we can go to the next slide. A couple, uh, several weeks ago, I guess, uh, Dr. Curry sent out a staff survey to all the, I guess, all the employees in the, in the schools. And, uh, I was very pleased with the results, so I wanted to share some of them with you. Out of a scale on five of being strongly agree, I believe, uh, we, we had some, some high scores, I thought, felt like. Uh, first thing is our staff having a shared belief that governs major school decisions. Our, our school improvement team over the years has involved to be a better group of people. Uh, and not because there's different people on there, just 'cause we are serving that function better. Uh, people are given more input, they are taking things from the people they represent and bringing that to meetings. Uh, we're having better discussion during meetings. And over the years, as far as me, I've become a better listener to what, to other ideas, and being open to what other people think. And working together, we have been able to, to plan good things for the school, and if something needs change, to go in a different direction if we need to, to change on that. Uh, the second one, that was a high one, was, uh, all staff members are valued members of the team. Uh, all of us at Sugarloaf, we, we understand that. If you have a bus driver out, if you have one or two bus drivers out, it throws a kink in the day. If you have a, during, I believe, the COVID, uh, when we first started the first year, there was, uh, I believe we had a, a teacher, we had both kindergarten teachers out at one time, and a kindergarten teacher, and a teacher assistant in the same classroom. So if everybody's not there, i- it throws a kink in their daily operation of, of the school. Um, just a little bit less on the scoring, uh, two things. Uh, our staff has a shared vision, I'll share a little bit about that, uh, later, and our staff share common goals. The third one on there, I put down is about the student rules of conduct are consistently enforced. Uh, just for fun, I went through the, uh, the discipline referrals for the year, and, uh, I counted how many we had, and I wanted to see how many students were the first year at Sugarloaf. And if, and it came out to be what I thought it would be, over half of them was the first year at Sugarloaf. So, saying that is, I believe we establish some rules and expectations of our students at our school, and if, they understand what to, to expect and what to do, and they, they, uh, perform accordingly. Also, teachers have to have strong classroom management. They have to start, have to start out in the classroom so they can be able to, to teach. Next one, diverse student needs are understood, uh, and our staff does all they can to meet their needs, they certainly do. We have students from all kinds of different backgrounds, and in the last, say, four or five years, that has, uh, been more than I've seen. Uh, we've, we have, uh, we have students that are, come from homes, that come in, that their grandparent takes them, and that their grandparent's trying to raise them. We actually have one situation that there is a great-grandparent trying to, to raise their two kids. So they come in with a lot of things that, uh, can inhibit them from learning. But I'll brag on our staff, our teachers, and teacher assistants, everybody that works at our school, they do whatever they can to help these kids out where they can get in a position to learn. Uh, I, I try to say that when they come to school, they have their best eight hours of their day, and a lot of them look forward to that each, each day. All right, let's go to the next slide. Uh, on our school motto, shooting for the stars, reaching beyond expectations. Our school pledge, we do this every morning on the intercom, and, uh, we have usually a third grader that, uh, will lead the school over the intercom in saying this, and we want kids to come to school happy. Uh, we want them to come with a positive attitude, and we emphasize that you need to give your best effort. Everybody can give an effort, but you need to give your best effort. And then we want them to improve and, and be, we want to prepare them to be a, in the, uh, citizen in the community one day. Uh, what do we want for our staff? Uh, what do we want as a staff for our students? As a school community, we want to give them the opportunity to be successful and reach their potential regardless of the social, cultural, emotional challenges. We do our best to try to take care of that and help them learn. All right, let's go to the next, uh, with the survey. Uh, one of the questions was, one of the questions were, what did you find this year to be helpful or supportive? Uh, I won't go through all of them, but I'll, uh, highlight some. Uh, we're a tight group of employees, helping each other. Uh, some days, uh, teachers need to give each other a pep talk, sometimes they need to have a listen ear, cr- shoulder to cry on. Uh, I'll brag on our instructional coach, uh, support from her, provide, she provides resources for our students, she goes and finds things for them, will help them teach, she'll find, uh, materials they need for lessons, she helps them tremendously. And then just her teachers and, and parents helping, uh, the, the teachers do their daily job. Uh, positive things for PTO, our PTO has worked with us, they have provided, uh, lunch. The staff also appreciated the central office, uh, providing the appreciation lunch, that was well-received by our, our staff. Uh, positive attitude, uh, between staff members. Uh, next one is about Wednesdays as a day to regroup and plan together and hold meetings. Uh, usually, we'd have staff meetings and student support team meetings, school improvement team meetings, we'd have that after school at 3:45 or 4:00. It's given us the opportunity to have that at, say, 1:00, 1:30 during the day, where they, uh, don't have to have that after-school day. So that has definitely helped. And as far as the last one, I try to support the kid, teachers, and, and try to take them, things off them so they can teach in the classroom. All right, next one is about what you need to finish out the year strong. Uh, first thing, we need to understand that students aren't where they are in previous years. Uh, this, it's been two years, we haven't had a full year, so we need to work with students where they are, and work on helping them grow from, uh, one part of the year onto the next part of the year. We need to continue to work together and support each other. Uh, one issue that we need, we're trying to tackle is, uh, getting some students to come to school. Our attendance hasn't been great in some areas this, this year. Uh, and then, uh, as far as when they're not at school, not doing work. Even if they're out for, uh, unfortunately, COVID, uh, just not doing your work. So that's been a struggle for us this year. Uh, we won't incorporate rewards. Also, uh, in the past, uh, I guess maybe since Christmas, we have experienced a, a more of a time that we haven't had to make adjustments from major changes. So that's going more, uh, going smoother for us. And on the last one, uh, one of the teachers put faith. And, uh, the reason you put that is some days, you have hard days, uh, at, at school. And with the, this thing, the COVID crisis going on, you just have hard days. And sometimes you just have to ask God for strength and guidance to, to lead you, and, and trust in God that you go and make the right decisions, that you're gonna do the best things for kids every day. So, uh, if we can do that, that'll, we'll be successful. All right, I believe down to the last slide. Uh, we have, uh, for several years, during PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention, we have had, with students, we have had these things called Positive Office Referrals. And, uh, what happens is a teacher or a staff member sees them in the school, they do something special, they do something extra-nice for somebody, they take time to help somebody, or they have, uh, they've made an achievement of some kind, they get called out on the intercom for a Positive Office Referral. So we talked in PBIS, it'd be great to recognize some teachers. So this week, we started having Positive Office Referrals for teachers. So, uh, I'll list some of the things that we, uh, some of the questions, we asked the kids about their teachers. And, uh, our guidance counselor, uh, took, uh, the first part of the class one day, and, uh, she helped us out with this, of asking, of letting the kids, uh, talk about things that, uh, their, their teachers are doing great. And, uh, on the first one, uh, the answer, most answers were kind or happy. Uh, I'll ask you, if you can remember back during your school days, uh, can everybody remember a teacher that was happy and enthusiastic, and they, they wanted to teach, and they were kind to their students? And we can also, well, maybe not everybody, but we can also think of a teacher that students thought were mean, they were hateful, and they, they, they acted like they hated to be at school. Well, which, which classrooms you learned better in? You learned it at the first one. So, uh, students see that. And, uh, then the second thing about what makes you happy, uh, I'll list, list some things about improving on weak areas, making learning fun, and positive jo- dojos. That's the way the teachers correspond with parents. Uh, number three, what makes your teacher happier, smile? Well, we had the, the general things. We, when we listen, we do our work, all those good things. But, uh, one stood out at me. The, the student said, "When I gave her a picture that I painted for her." So, uh, that was, I thought that was real good. Uh, what, your favorite subject idea, or idea that your teacher has taught you? Uh, one thing, uh, well, we had the math and reading and working on Chrome Books and iPads, uh, were several things. But two things, uh, "Taught me how to treat others and do it as you never know you can do it." So, uh, teachers do that. Uh, then, the last one about favorite memory of your teacher and class this year, uh, some of the things, uh, for kindergarten, to, they, they told me that, they put on there that helping not to lose things and just telling me bye in the afternoon before they let go home. And, uh, then, uh, talk with me about things I like, and one teacher integrating arts and crafts in the classroom, and then telling the class they are very good and to never give up. So those are just some of the things we got from the surveys. And again, we started that this week, so we called out the two teachers. We do one in K2 and one in 35 each, each week. Okay. I believe that's all I, I have, or any questions that you have?
I got one question back to one of your bullet points on your slides. Uh, you had on there about finishing the year strong, addressing attendance issues in crowded classrooms. Uh, your, your building's one that I haven't been in, I mean, that there's been construction since I've been in it. Uh, are you still, like, like, I know you got the newer lower building years ago, and then you got a newer upper addition. Like, the older parts of the building, like, are you still using those for classroom, traditional classroom settings? Are they more of a special?
Right. Yeah, right now, we have in our, we have, uh, I call it the lower building and the upper building. And we have, uh, basically, you have K2 classrooms in the lower building, we have 35 classrooms in the upper building. And then, in our main or original building, we basically have exceptional children's teacher, music, uh, Title I, uh, speech, I'm trying to call, uh, computer lab, and I, I didn't name them all, but, but when, uh, I, when I said crowded cla- that was more, uh, in our upper grades, we have a lot of students in our classrooms. And, uh, we have, uh, a fifth-grade classroom has 26, I believe a four or five combination has 23, and fourth grade has 24, something like that. So that's what I, they're trying to meet everybody's needs, and especially in one fourth-grade classroom, there's a bunch of diverse learners in there, that the, the teacher is doing a great job, but she is trying to spend time with all these different students. So that's what we, with crowded classrooms, with trying to, we, we can't social distance right now, but trying the best we can with the number in that classroom. So that's what that referred to.
Well, I was curious, 'cause it'd been several years, and I knew you had the two old, where, I, I used to call it a while where it split both directions, and that's what I didn't know, if you was, had traditional classes still in those, 'cause I know those tend to be smaller compared to newer classrooms.
Yeah, I wouldn't say as far as the room, uh, the, the size of the room, more the number of students that are in there.
Got you.
So, uh, thank you for asking that to clarify that.
Thank you.
Mr. Cash, I really like this, um, teacher Positive Office Referral. I've never seen anything like that, and I think it's really a good way to highlight a teacher that's doing a really good job. And when it comes from your children in your classroom, I, I just think that's kinda special. If our teacher it would be to me.
We, we did, we set, uh, one, one meeting, uh, PBIS meeting, we tried to come up with something we could do different for teachers, 'cause it, it has been a hard year for some of the teachers, and we wanted to do something to make it special for them. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Okay, Board Members, do we have any, uh, committee reports? No committee reports. Okay, thank you. Okay, now, I'll recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey, Chief Financial Officer, for, uh, changes in our installment pay for 10-month employees.
Um, tonight, I came to give you an update on the state's elimination of the installment system. Um, in the middle of February, we received a letter from the Department of Public Instruction telling us that they would no longer support our installment system that's been used for about 40 years for school employees, and, um, that, uh, we would be charged with finding a way to provide those, uh, installments to our employees. And, um, I think to understand a little bit about this, we need to talk about the installment system that we had. Um, the way the state were, did their installment system, they took a, employees' gross salary and, um, divided that by 12. And that's the number, that's the amount of money they received per month. Then, in the summer, which for us is, um, May and Ju- uh, June and July, they received the same amount of money. So their 10-month, um, salary was spread over 12 months. And you can see here that that difference was put in an escrow account for those employees by the state. The, well, really, three options that our teachers and, um, 10-month staff will have, is that they can use the State Employees Credit Union Summer Cash, and this is something that has been available to employees, and many school systems have moved their installments to this. But, um, the employee can go to the State Credit Union and set up a summer cash account, and have an amount of money placed in that account, and this, the credit union will, um, give them two installments in the summer, uh, of the half, get half the money one month and half the money the second month. They will also- But the employee can go to the State Credit Union and set up a summer cash account and have an amount of money placed in that account. And this, the credit union will give them two installments in the summer of the half, get half the money one month and half the money the second month. They will also pay interest on this account. And what, the way we do it is we send the, the money that the, this employee has set aside directly to the credit union. An employee can also do that with the bank of their choice. So what they would do in that instance is that they would come, fill out a direct deposit form for us and then place the money that they want to draw in the summer in their own bank or a savings account that, that they would choose. And the way this works is that an employee can make up to three different banks or accounts for a direct deposit. And so one of those would be maybe their checking account for their regular month's salary. And then for their summer month's salary, they would probably put that in a savings account. And then they can always choose to just receive the 10 installment payments and to do whatever they would like for their summer months. Okay, as I said in the fir, in the, one of the first slides, the way the old installment system worked is you took the gross pay and divided that by 12. The way this works on the summer cash is that an employee would decide how much money they wanted per month in the summer. So in this instance, if it was $1,500, then they multiply that by two, it's $3,000. And so then they divide that by 10, which is the number of actual pay, salary payments they're going to get. So they would put an extra $300 in either the summer cash or their personal savings account for the summer months. The other item that this changes is their benefits and deductions. With the old system, if a person chose to receive their salary in 12 months, we took health insurance and other deductions out for 12 months. Now, the state has said that we have to pay everyone in 10 months. So that means that we have to take an additional premium for health insurance and Mark III benefits to make sure that we have money to cover those in the summer. So for health insurance, the extra money will be deducted over 10 months. And for Mark III benefits, we will take the extra deduction from June to May. But the annual cost of these, of the, of these benefits will be the same. Okay, where we go from here? If the employees want to use the summer cash, then they need to go to the credit union by July 1st. And that will give the credit union time to process their request and to send it to us so that we can set up the payroll deduction. Employees who want a portion of their check to go to their personal bank will need to fill out a new direct deposit form and get it to us by August 1st. So we can process that for the first August, for the first salary payment in August. What we will do is I attached to your agenda a copy of the letter that we will send out to all employees, also a copy of the information on the state employee's summer cash and the letter from DPI. Next week, we will have principals meeting. We will discuss this with the principals and then have them send a copy of the letter to all their 10-month employees in their buildings. Are there any questions, any clarification?
One, one question that I would have would be, I probably have missed it, but is there a benefit that State Employees Credit Union is offering the employee over using their regular bank as far as an interest rate or?
Well, the State Employees Credit Union does provide, of course, interest. And they provide, their summer cash program pays better than their 60-month CD. So they, of course, right now, interest rates are not very high, but it, it, they try to give them the best advantage possible. I guess that what you would do is just to see where you would get the best interest rate.
And, and would it be correct that if, if you were paying into that program throughout the year, would you not have access to that money at any point that you needed to? Rather than just, I mean, it's also a warning, you know, that you've got access to that, so.
Well, what, what happens is that it goes into the account. If the employee wants the money, then they can draw it out. But they can't, they can't have additional deductions taken out until the next year. So once you come out of that account, then you stay out for a year. Now, that doesn't keep you from going and putting money in a savings account at the credit union.
So if, if you had vested, say, $1,000 by April, and you took out $200, have you voided an agreement with them and you're not able to use that?
Once, once you withdraw from your summer cash, then you, then you'd have to take it all out. But you get the interest that you, that you have accumulated. Then you can't start putting in again until the next August.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
I, I got a couple of questions. Just to be clear, it will not affect anyone this year as long as they act by July 1st and start in August with this process?
We will pay installments in June and July because they were taken out this year. Then this will begin in August. One of the advantages of, of changing is that if an employee, if employee wanted to take install, to, to do an installment, they had to let us know before the first day employees came back. With this situation, with the way that we're doing this now, if an employee comes to work for us in December, they can start taking out for the summer. Now, they might have to pay a little more or they get a little less in the summer. They'd have to work that out, but they can have some money put aside for the summer.
And, and I've been following this for a while because it does affect my household. Will, I, I've been, I've been reading, seeing a lot of stuff. I mean, I know we've got to act within the law that we can't do it through the state system. Do you foresee it changing that they say locals have to still offer something in-house? Do, do you think that might happen?
I don't think so.
Without the credit union?
Well, okay. What, what the law has changed to say is that by using the summer cash or allowing people to make a deposit into their personal account, we are now fulfilling the law, the way it has been changed.
Any chance that the local credit union may, as many people is going to be affected by this? Any chance that maybe they have a representative in the building a few days between now and the end of the year? Maybe work day, something at the end of the year to help our employees not have to go out of the way to get there?
Well, I think that's, I think part of the problem is we're not allowing people to come into the building. But I, I think that we could work out some, some way with the credit union. They, they have expressed an interest to work with us and any way they can. And so we might work out a day where employees, I mean, we, there are things we could do to make it more convenient for the employees to sign up.
It's, it's a great program. I've used it several years. And, you know, it's a great program. It's just, like you said, they got to act by a certain date or they're behind the start.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I'll recognize Dr. Jennifer Hefner for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Schrum. You do have this document attached into your agenda. I wanted to start with just a reminder that the North Carolina School Board Association webinar entitled, "Reach of North Carolina's Public Records Law", was made available today from 7:00 a.m. until midnight tonight. I have given you the web address and the passcode. The passcode, please note, is case sensitive just in case anybody wants to watch that video later this evening. It is available until midnight. I have to say I was very pleased last night when the Board of Commissioners voted to allow our Board of Education to remain nonpartisan. I want to publicly thank Marty Pennell, Dr. Jeff Peel, and Chairman Larry Yoder for their votes and their support to keep our board nonpartisan. I would encourage each of you to thank them personally if you have a chance to do that. And I really have to say that I loved what Board Member Ryan said in her statements last night. "The Alexander County Board of Education puts children first, not party first." And I think that that was a powerful statement. A special thank you is also extended to the board members and community members that spoke during last night's meeting in support of leaving our board as it is. The third bullet I wanted to mention, I'm just very proud of Erin Lewis. She's the media coordinator at Ellendale. I'm proud of her because she has been pursuing and has been awarded yet another grant through Appalachian State's Public School Partnership Mini Grant Program. Erin's grant application was one of 10 awarded in the amount of $989, and it's for steam boxes. And as I said, Erin has been awarded several grants during the past couple of years. And I just want to thank her for going above and beyond because, as you all know, it's not a requirement to apply for a conference. Joe Cornwell was named the 2020 Coach of the Year for Men's Cross Country. And John Presnel has been awarded the 2021 Coach of the Year for Women's Basketball. Please join me in congratulating these very deserving coaches. Bullet number five, the Award of Honor Committee will need to schedule a meeting in the near future to discuss the nominations that have been submitted. That committee is comprised of the following. Marty Lautermilch, Raimi Robinson, and Chairman Harry Schrum. After you meet, please follow up with me so that we can determine how to move forward with this very prestigious event. We have not had an Award of Honor celebration for several years, and I'm just excited to be able to have this again because we have nominations. Bullet number six, please note that on Wednesday, May 5th, we are going to have our of the year celebration. It is planned to begin at 2:30 that day. As of right now, we're planning on a virtual celebration. And more details will be coming from Renee Mead about how to log on and different things to be able to watch that celebration. And then the last thing that I want to mention, and thanks, Mr. Cash, for, it's a good lead in for my last bullet. The staff appreciation activities held during the month of March were definitely a highlight. And I have received more thank you notes and emails from staff than ever before for anything that we have done. I want to thank Renee Mead for all the work she did to schedule the lunches, the deliveries, the food trucks. And also tonight, she's made a video that I think you will enjoy. But Renee, I just want to say thank you. And at this time, if we could play the staff appreciation video, that would be great. Thanks, everyone. Wonderful. Do you all have any questions or comments?
I have one quick one. Do we keep a running tally on grants and stuff? So, I mean, I know people do go above and beyond, you know, and it takes time. Do we keep a running tally year to year roughly what comes into our system? You know, that ever could be released to let people know, hey, these teachers and staff are going beyond the requirement to seek out. Because I know Ms. Lewis has wrote quite a few. I've seen it because my kid's been up there. But, you know, that would be interesting. I know, I know we keep up with fundraising and stuff like that. Have we ever kind of just somewhere jotted a line down?
No, but that would be interesting to celebrate at the end of the year, how many grants we have been awarded. Because you all hear about a good majority of those. And the outdoor classrooms, I think we've had four or five schools to receive that this year. So that's a good idea. It's something that we might be able to celebrate.
Not to put no work on nobody, but you know, if, if, if at each school, I mean, I know, I know Mr. Promisher and I know that the high school, I mean, they used to, you know, they kind of, they would, each month, if somebody got a grant, it was Mitch, you know, and it wouldn't take a lot to just jot down each school. How much was coming in?
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Ms. Sharon Mahaffey for the second reading of Board of Education Policy Revisions.
The second policies that are up, were up for second reading this month. As for principal input, and there were no suggestions or comments. And so I would ask for approval on second reading.
So moved. Marty Lautermilch.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second, Bridgette Ron.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the policy revisions from second reading, please say aye. Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you. And if you will continue with first readings, please.
We have five policies up for first reading tonight. These are minor changes, usually grammatical or with a reference. And so I would ask you that we approve these on first reading.
Okay. All right, we've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve on first reading.
And a second?
Second, Bridgette Ron.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving on first reading, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now I'd like to recognize Mr. Gordon Palmer, the principal at ACHS for the Cougar mascot name reveal.
Good evening, Chairman Schrum, members of the board, Dr. Hefner. We want to do something fun this year. We had looked back in our roughly 50-year history at Alexander Central with our Cougar being our mascot, and we realized Cougar never really had an official name. So we wanted to do something fun with the staff and the students. So we came up with nominated lists of potential names for our Cougar. The, the choices that were nominated was Chester, Sir Pouncealot, Cosmo, Alexander, Carl. Unfortunately, my offerings of Blitz and Molly did not get approved for the student vote. But we've got a short video for our, our reveal for our, the name of our Cougar mascot so that we could make it official tonight. So our Cougar is officially named Alexander or Alex for short. I think it's fitting for Alexander County. I would like to say a huge shout out and thank you to Donna Reed for putting this together. Donna does a great job and. Donna does a great job, and she's always looking for fun ideas and things to do to get our students involved, so we're extremely happy to have this here for you tonight. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Very nice, very good job.
That's the most fun one I've happened, I don't know where.
Okay, now, I'll recognize Jessica Anshin, the Director of Accountability, for the Alexander Early College Calendar.
Good evening. I'm not anywhere as amusing as that one, I apologize ahead of time. So I have before you this evening the proposed draft for the Alexander Early College Calendar for next year. It, it's actually pretty simple, there's no A-days or B-days or remote instruction days. Were there any specific questions regarding the proposed draft that I could answer? That's a good silence. So if there are no questions, I just need approval.
I make the motion to approve the calendar. Matt Cooksey.
Do we have a second?
Second, Raimi Robinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the Alexander Early College Calendar for 2021, 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we'll recognize Ms. Macy Jones, Head Start Director for the COLA Grant.
Good evening, Chairman Schrum, and board members, and Superintendent Hefner. This evening, I am here to ask for permission to submit the Cost of Living Adjustment Grant in the amount of, let me get to the right paper, it is $19,455. And then if you have your paper, you can see that it gives us several options for how we can use the money, and one, the first option that we have is an increase of no less than 1.2% increase to the current pay scale for Head Start. We can also use the money for fringe benefits and to offset the cost of additional benefits that we have, retirement and so forth. So tonight, I am here to ask for permission to do as indicated in this instruction from the regional office, and that is to increase our pay scale by the 1.22%, and then to use the additional funds to offset the cost of retirement and insurance.
Okay, Board members, you've heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
So moved, Matt Cooksey.
Second, Marty Lautermilch.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, everyone in favor of accepting the COLA Grant as presented, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, please say no. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, just very quickly, just wanted to let you know that we do, we did receive an additional $30,097 for COVID monies, $30,097 for COVID monies, and we plan to spend some of this money to continue partnering with the Exceptional Children's Program to provide an additional speech therapist for our Head Start children to increase the amount of time that they get to spend in therapy, and also to let you know that with part of our COVID monies this year, we've been able to put washers and dryers at four of our five sites, and the schools are able to use those, not just for Head Start, but anyone that may need those washers and dryers. And Chris Campbell is working with me tomorrow to try to find a place at our final site, and that is Whittenburg, to try to place a washer and a dryer. And then I'd asked Dr. Hefner if she would show this kindergarten packet, and she asked me to show it, that every child, every four-year-old that is transitioning to kindergarten from Head Start or NC pre-K will receive this backpack as part of our school readiness initiative, and it is full of developmentally appropriate equipment and tools, numbers, letters, books, all the things that they may need whenever they get to kindergarten, but this is just an extension of summer learning and to help families who may not be able to afford what they need this summer to have these tools to extend the learning activities at home. And there are activity books inside. Students will also receive Lego kits as well, and they will go home. Teachers are being trained on Leap Into Science with Dr. Carol Moore and STEM West, and I don't know how happy the parents will be to receive over 300 Legos, but we are thrilled that all the children will receive several boxes, and maybe next month, if the new director is allowed, that person can bring something and show you the nice kits that every family will get, and they are getting training from our teachers because this one is one of our parent engagement activities. So just wanted to let you know that we are working on school readiness as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, the board will enter into closed session to discuss personnel per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6. Meeting's adjourned.